In accordance with the open public meetings, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township for Franklin has been provided. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase.
Here.
Mr. Howe.
Here.
Steinauer.
Mr. Giver.
Here.
Mr. Mettler.
Here.
Mr. Onyaka. Mr. Pettit is excused, he still is ill. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Petosnek.
Chairman Arcini.
Here. Motion for the minutes from October 7, 2015, if there are no changes or corrections anyone wants to make.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Giver.
Here.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. I have no resolutions tonight. Vouchers for Clarkin and Vigmilo, our attorney, standard November retainer of $833.33.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. Our one and only hearing tonight is L'Oreal, PLN 1500016.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linnis. My offices are at 21 Clyde Road in Somerset, New Jersey. I'm pleased to represent L'Oreal this evening on an inherently beneficial use. L'Oreal is proposing a renewal energy facility known as a solar array facility, ground-mounted solar, at its facility on Commerce Drive. Under the municipal land use law, renewable energy facilities like this are inherently beneficial, and in Franklin Township, since it's in the M2 zone, it's a permitted use. So I would call it a double permitted use with an inherently beneficial twist. We're here, the only variance we're seeking is for a setback of the accessory structure, the solar array. The ordinance requires 50 feet, we're seeking a variance to allow 30 feet. I have one witness, and that's Craig Stires. He's the author of the site plan. He's a licensed professional engineer, and without further ado, I can introduce Mr. Stires.
Raise your right hand. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Craig Stires, 43 West High Street, Somerville.
All right, Craig, would you give the members of the Board and members of the public the benefit of your educational, professional background and qualifications and experience?
Professional engineer in state New Jersey. I have testified before this Board numerous times, as well as the...
Like last month?
Board of adjustment.
You're accepted. Thank you.
Engineer and planner, or just engineer?
Engineer.
Okay.
All right, and Mr. Stires, as a matter of fact, you testified before this Board and on behalf of L'Oreal, getting the last solar array approved here, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, would you describe the existing site?
As you may know, it's the L'Oreal facility, 1 Commerce Drive. It's also known as, the main facility is on 10.32 Block 8603. They also have another lot across the street, which is essentially the parking and the previous, previously approved solar array. Just really going to...
And what are you proposing tonight?
What they're looking to do is install approximately 2,850 solar panels, or just under one megawatt of power, which would supply the facility, similar to the previously approved application. And also, the area beneath the solar panels, since they're putting in the solar panels, we don't want to really compromise any future development of the site. So at the same time, what we're looking to do is to grade the area beneath the solar panels for any future stormwater management, if the facility were ever to be built out. Real quick, I have a...
You want to mark that A1?
Yes.
Identify the exhibit, please.
The exhibit is an aerial photograph of the facility. We have Commerce Drive on the bottom, the main facility.
Let me interrupt you for one second. Prepared, under your direction.
Yes.
Thank you.
And titled aerial view.
Okay.
Has a red line around the property of 10.32, as well as the, I mentioned previously, the lot across the street, the main L'Oreal facility. This lot, as well as all the lots on Commerce Drive, were part of the Murray Industrial Complex. All of these lots, when they were approved as part of the subdivision, the stormwater management was taken care of, or built or constructed at that time. There's a detention basin on the north side of Commerce, and then a second one on the southerly side of Commerce. So any development of these lots, the stormwater management has been taken into account through these regional basins. L'Oreal did purchase an additional lot, which is the vacant wooded lot behind their facility. So if this were ever to be developed, they would need stormwater management associated with that. So what we're doing, as I mentioned previously, we're going to grade beneath those basins, beneath the panels, a detention basin, which would not be used at the time, but if this were ever developed in the future, we have it somewhat accounted for, and we would have to come back to the Board and supply the stormwater management report and all the documentation to show that that meets the regulations.
All right, Craig, you superimposed on that aerial the proposed location of the panels?
Yes.
And you want to point that out?
These would be the panels in this location right here. The grassed area just to the east of the solar panels is a bio-retention basin that was constructed for the addition of L'Oreal, of their easterly side of the building. So that bio-retention basin will be left intact, and then we would build around that with the solar panels.
All right, did you bring with you another exhibit?
Yeah, just the...
Want to mark that A2 and identify it?
Sure. This is essentially a colored version of the grading plan that you have in your package.
Prepared by you or under your direction and control?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, showing the L'Oreal facility, the entrance drive, loading docks. This area here would be the bio-retention basin, and then the solar panels would be in the field adjacent to the bio-retention basin.
All right, this solar array panel will serve what? What structures and what...
It would serve the main facility of L'Oreal.
All right, we are requesting a variance for the setback of the solar array. The solar array is considered a structure, it's an accessory structure, the ordinance requires 50 feet, we're proposing 30 feet. First of all, from the technical standpoint, is there, do you see any benefit for the additional 20 feet of solar array?
Obviously, we were trying to get as much power for the facility as possible, and hence the reason for, the request for the variance is in the front right here. So instead of being 50 feet back, it's only 30. But at the same time, we do have a decorative fence in front of that, so it'd be somewhat shielded.
Okay, and not from a planner's point of view, but from a site engineer, a site design engineer's point of view? Have you studied the municipal land use law? Are you generally familiar with the municipal land use law?
Generally, yes.
And you're generally familiar with the purposes of the municipal land use law?
Yes.
And are you aware of the fact that one of the purposes of the municipal land use law is favoring renewable energy facilities just like this, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, now, on the other side of the coin, from an engineering standpoint, or a site review standpoint, do you see any negatives if the variance were to be granted?
I don't believe so, no. I think one of the things, if you were to look at the aerial photograph, you can see that this is pretty well, or isolated, I guess you could say. You have the existing building on the west side, you have another warehouse building on the north side, you have the Sewage Authority on the east side, and then another industrial building, as well as the detention basin on the south side. So it is pretty well buffered on all four sides, as far as visibility.
And you're familiar with the surrounding neighborhood, are you not?
Yes.
And would this solar array facility be visible to any of the neighbors?
I don't believe so.
All right, did you have an opportunity, Mr. Stires, to review the staff reports with our client that were generated by the Planning Board staff?
Yes.
All right, first report I'm going to refer you to is Mr. Vega's report. Mr. Vega's the Assistant Township Engineer. He issued a report dated October 27, 2015. We can safely report to the Board that his general review comments, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16, we can comply with?
Yes.
Okay.
Just tell us what you can.
Okay, number six.
And then we'll have a discussion on that. Don't confuse us with tell us what you can.
We're not going to comply with number six, no. Go ahead, why aren't we going to comply with number six? Oh, they're just looking for a clarification. Would you provide that clarification? The question is, the applicant is to provide clarification as to how egress-ingress provisions will be made to maintain the basin.
Similar to the solar facility that was across the street that's been installed, that is basically maintained through hand mowers and weed whackers. Essentially, although this is a larger facility, it's going to be the same principles. We have provided a gate at the bottom end, and essentially, they would get in that, through that section of the gate, and then maintain the facility from there.
As a matter of fact, did you bring a photo with you tonight?
Yes.
Which shows that the, how the existing solar facility is maintained? All right, what Mr. Stires is doing is passing out A3 for A3?
As soon as I see it, I can ask some questions.
Did you participate at all in the production of that photograph?
I did not take the photos. Mike Ford of GeoPeak, who's part of the application.
All right, Mike, you're part of the GeoPeak team? All right, you want to stand up, please? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Whoa.
I know you're trying, I know you're trying to expedite. Raise your right hand, please. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Ford, 238 Crescent Avenue, Ewing, New Jersey.
Got to put that mic on, if the mic's not on, or give him yours, Craig.
Sorry, Mike Ford, 238 Crescent Avenue in Ewing, New Jersey.
All right, Mr. Ford, we just handed out an exhibit for identification marked A3. Did you participate in the taking that photograph?
Yes, that is correct.
And does it, when was it taken?
That photo was taken this morning at the site, and is dated for today, I believe.
And that's the existing, the photograph of the existing solar facility, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Okay, does it, and it accurately depicts what it depicts?
It accurately depicts what's on-site currently, and the, how the site's designed, and how the grass is growing there on-site.
Okay, all right.
Frank, from the wording of that question, I think really what might, he might be asking is not necessarily how you're going to mow the grass, but how you're actually going to maintain the basin. I mean, right now, it's not going to be a used basin with any water in it. When it, if it ever were to get used, what kind of basin is it? Is it a detention or retention?
Regular detention basin.
You know, typically what we do, Mike, is we tell the engineers to work it out. I mean...
But I mean, that's, what I want to tell them to work out is not necessarily that you're going to mow, I don't think that's what he's asking, but that, the basin, if there's any filtration mechanisms, if there's anything else, that, how it will be cleaned and serviced by, generally, once every six months, I think, is the standard.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting to with the lawn mowers and the weed whackers, was that there's really no need for an actual vehicle to get into the, into the site. It's more of an access of smaller, you know, if, as far as cutting the lawn, it would be lawn mowers, weed whackers.
Mike, I think typically we let the engineers work that out. I mean, if you can prove to Tom and Julio you don't need it, they won't require it. If they think you're going to need it, they're going to require it. So I think you just work it out. We've been discussing this for a long time, and I think we've worked out 95 of...
Right, right.
...percent of the issues, I think you just work that out with it.
I mean, this is for a development that may or may not ever happen, and at that point, who knows what the stormwater rules would be?
Right.
Frankly, if you've designed something that 10 years from now, trying to use that for a basin, and it doesn't work...
Yeah.
That's your own risk.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just clarify that.
Okay. Item number 10, you want to provide clarification for tree removal replacement?
We will do that. There is a section of tree area that we will locate the individual trees. If there is any tree replacement, I'm sure Mark would like to hear this, that we would tend to probably put them along Dahmer Road. As far as tree replacement?
I'm sorry.
If we had any tree replacement...
Yes, that would be a good idea to put.
If you'd like that.
All right, item number 11, you want to provide clarification is what you're doing to support any electrical controls?
The electrical controls would be essentially hung on the back of the racking of the solar panels. I do have pictures, if you want to see them.
So there'd be no concrete pads?
No, there's no concrete pads.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's talk about grading and utility. Item 20, there's a request that you provide clarification as how the proposed grading improvements to the northeast corner of the basin will tie into the existing contour elevation 108.
17 through 21 are all okay. We can work them out.
Okay, we're fine. Stormwater management, 22 and 23.
22 and 23, we'd like to reserve the maintenance agreement, as well as the operation and maintenance, until such time that they're actually used as a detention basin.
All right, so in your view, based on the application we're presenting and the approval we're seeking, not necessarily a...
Correct, right.
Frank, if you develop a site, you'd have to come back and show us how that works.
Exactly, yes.
Now, if you're designing it and installing it as a detention basin, then you need a maintenance agreement.
It's not being used as a detention basin at the time.
Okay, so how is the water getting to the bio-retention basin?
It's flowing, it's flowing through that area.
Through the detention basin?
Yes.
So it's taking on water? You need a maintenance agreement.
Keith Carlwood, no.
We're not going to waive it. I don't, I wouldn't recommend waiving 22 or 23.
All right, with respect to outside agencies, you want to give the Board a status of our application for the outside agency?
DRNR Canal Commission, we have the approval, with the exception of providing the resolution, should it be approved. The county is pending. Somerset Union has a couple of comments that we got back to them today. I believe the Health Department did not have a comment.
Yes, they did. Health Department says okay.
Okay. The Sewage Authority said approved.
Very good. How about the Fire Department? They're not involved?
Yeah, I don't, I thought they had, they had no comment.
Police Department?
Right.
No comment?
I have reviewed the above catch and site plan, and no comments.
And we haven't received any information from the Water Department? We're not affecting any water?
Correct.
Okay, did you have an opportunity to review the Environmental Commission report?
Yes.
And the Environmental Commission indicates the 30-foot setback should not be an issue, recognizing the inherently beneficial use. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, do you have an opportunity to review Mr. Healy's October 12, 2015 memorandum?
Yes.
All right, are there any items you'd like to discuss with respect to that?
No.
We've already discussed the variance, we're requesting what we call a C2 variance, which is a net benefit analysis. What the Board is charged to do, and I'll defer to Mr. Clarkin, is to review the positive criteria. Does this variance advance any purpose of the municipal land use law? We've indicated that, in our opinion, it advances one of the purposes, which is to create renewable energy facilities. And then the other side of the coin is, are there any detriments? And you heard Mr. Stires indicating what his view was about detriments, and then you do a balancing act. For the Board's understanding, you should explain the ground surface under the panels, you just did, right?
Yes.
And how it'll be maintained. And fence detail, there's a discrepancy, 7 feet, 6 feet, what's going on with the fence?
It'll be 6 feet all the way around, and that'll be corrected on the plan.
Okay. All right. Have no further questions.
Questions from the Board?
Carl. This is either a question for Craig or Mike. What is the elevation above grade of the solar array on this picture? The front.
That covenant elevation there is 3 feet.
3 feet, and the proposed in the detention basin?
And be a minimum of 5.
And that's so you can maintain it with...
Well, it goes along with the grade, but yes. I mean, we're trying to keep it at a single, single elevation, so the grade beneath would go down, so it would be at least 5 feet.
Okay. One other question, it may be for, for the attorney. On the site plan, I don't know if you did any research regarding the bio-retention, conservation, and maintenance easement, whether ultimately the township, it's written to the benefit of the township also?
No, it isn't.
Would you be willing, would the applicant be willing to extend not only the detention basin, but also the bio-retention for maintenance easement to the township? Since DRCC, it appears like DRCC has probably an oversight at the time.
If DRCC, if we've granted the DRCC the conservation easement, I don't see any necessity to grant it to the town as well.
It's basically, it is part of our ordinance, and was probably an oversight at the time.
I don't think the ordinance was in effect at the time.
An oversight, I'm asking if you'd be willing to do that now and extend it, not only for the detention basin that you're proposing, but also the bio-retention basin?
I would see that actually the easements would have slightly different purposes. An easement to DRCC says basically, you're keeping it as a bio-retention basin, you're not cutting the trees down. An easement to the town is saying, you're going to make sure that it continues to work as a bio-retention basin.
Correct.
Functionally, will it be okay?
I think, is, one question for you, if we grant that, is it a conservation easement? And I'm just kind of putting that question, because now you have the solar panels and a conservation easement, are we getting into a little bit of a gray area?
Well, that'll have to be written into the maintenance agreement.
I wouldn't see why it would be...
Maintenance, but not conservation.
I mean, they could potentially take out the solar panels in the future and develop the site, so how could it possibly be a conservation easement?
Right, that's what I'm driving at, exactly.
I don't think that would be an issue.
I think the easement is actually operation and maintenance to the benefit of the town, along with the stormwater maintenance agreement, which is for the type of facility, stormwater facility. That's what Julio's looking for on 22 and 23.
As long as it's not a conservation easement, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
I think, call it, I think Frank can work that out, call it, we're going to call it.
We have the standard forms.
Well, I know that when we were talking about the bio-retention basin, and you were asking him whether, when it went to the township, it was a conservation easement. So I just want to be on the record that it is not a conservation easement that we are agreeing to.
We're asking, the township would be asking for whatever's in our ordinance, and we've done for every other basin since it went inception. I'm pretty sure it's maintenance and operation, which gives us the right to inspect, as well as if the facility falls in disarray, we have the right to go in and do what we need to do to bring it back up to standards and put a lien on the property.
I think if it's limited to maintenance and operation, we could probably go along with that.
Yeah.
As long as it's limited to that, okay.
Ted, did you have a question?
Yeah, if it's maintenance and operation, it's maintenance and operation of a stormwater basin. If someday in the future you propose to develop it for something different, and it stops being a stormwater basin, then the agreement laps...
So we can craft language indicating, so long as it remains a stormwater basin, and that the easement...
Is that okay?
Right.
Yeah.
Would be dependent on that?
Yeah.
And would disappear in the future?
Yeah, and so long as it is or is projected to be a stormwater basin. Because, you know, what you're going to do right now is sort of have sheet flow across it to the bio-retention basin, and we want to make sure that that works.
Right. All right, we have no problem with that.
Nope.
Ted, did you have anything additional, or is that part of your...
Well, one thing was, I don't see any landscaping planned. Does that mean that you're neither adding nor subtracting any landscaping?
Well, we did, we, one of the comments that Mark had was, there is a, you can see the dark area up to the north.
Yeah.
We have to go back and locate the individual trees. If there is any tree replacement required, what I'm suggesting is that we supplement the buffer on Dahmer Road.
Right.
So that would be our...
So you're not planting any trees in the area of this proposal?
That would be kind of counterproductive.
Yeah, well, yeah. And you're not making any changes to trees in the bio-retention basin?
No, no. And then the area that the panels themselves are, with the exception of that north end, it's essentially a meadow at this point.
Yeah.
It's a recent meadow, because from Google Street View, it's lawn, and then when you actually go out there, it's starting to grow up.
Yeah, I mean, when they did the addition to the building, that was the construction staging area. So it's been a little bit of everything over the last few years.
Just a quick overview for the variance. So what they're, the zone requirement for, in the M1 zone, the M2 zone, and the corporate business zone, is that there, it's a 50-foot setback that applies to buildings, accessory structures, and even parking lots. So basically, the intent is for those zones throughout the township, World's Fair Drive, Veronica, et cetera, is to have an open landscaped yard in front of our industrial buildings and commercial buildings. The applicant's proposing to, with the solar panels, to go within 30 feet. And basically, what they're, they're making the argument that, they're acknowledging there is no hardship, but they're basically saying this is a C2 variance, and making the point that this, I guess from their perspective, that the benefit outweighs the detriments, because this is a solar facility that's inherently beneficial, and that is a renewable energy source. So really, it's, that's really the exercise that the Board has to think about, which is the detriment to that intent of that, of the M1 zone, to have an open landscaped lawn of 50 feet, versus the benefits that the applicant has presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go a little further than Mark did, but before I do, if I could ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mr. Stires, what percentage of the facility's electric requirements will be produced by the solar array?
All right, we have a new witness, Mr. Clark, and you could swear him in.
I will. Yes, I'm going to swear you in. Raise your right hand, please. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My first name is Adnan Javan. I live in 351 Garrison Road, Bridgewater, New Jersey, 08807.
Can you give him the mic?
Okay, you heard the question, what's the answer?
It's 20% right now, and they're going to be going close to 29% of the facility will be powered by solar.
All right, my purpose in asking is just to make sure that you are not creating more than what the facility needed.
Correct.
All right, that would change the use from my perspective.
Correct.
Okay?
It'd be a use variance, then. It would even be before the board.
Exactly, okay. My second question, Mr. Linnis was good enough to provide a proffer with regard to the C2 analysis, but I just want to hear that the proffer is that the benefits will substantially outweigh the detriment, because that's the...
That's correct, because simply we see no detriment.
Okay, all right. Couple of comments to build on what Mark said. Number one, while it may be inherently beneficial, that's not an issue that supports this application. If it was a use variance, all right, then its inherently beneficial status would support that use variance, all right? But it's a permitted use by virtue of the state statute, because it's in a non-residential zone. But what is important, all righty, is that it, at least from what the testimony has been, is that one of the purposes of the municipal land use law, okay, the provision[1790.26] provision for renewable energy, uh, is being advanced. So, I just want to make sure that the board, if it's going to approve this application, does it not because it's inherently beneficial, but because it serves one of the purposes of the MLUL. Uh, number two, oh, no, number three, uh, I just want you to also understand that when you're weighing the benefits and the detriment, the benefits have to be benefits that accrue to the township. They can also accrue to the applicant, but it also has to be a benefit, all right, that the township is realizing.
And I think, Jim, and I, I agree with you, by the way, but I do think that's where inherently beneficial comes in. By statute, it's inherently beneficial, which means, uh, that, that it automatically benefits the community, benefits, uh, has a certain benefit. So, I agree with you that inherently beneficial is usually applied to a use variance. The statute is absolutely clear that this is an, uh, an inherently beneficial use, which in and of itself is a benefit to the community.
Because it is renewable energy.
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a little circular.
It is, okay.
What is this six-foot fence going to look like?
Perfect question.
All right. Want to mark that exhibit A four?
Who took this photograph?
Mike. This is a photo of the existing facility across the street and planning using same fence.
Okay, next question, would it be possible-
Can we, can we hold on just one sec?
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure we get this on the record correctly. Mr. Ford, this is a photograph that's been marked A four, uh, was taken, uh, on November three. Uh, did you participate in the production of this photograph?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
And what is it a photograph of?
It's a photo of the existing, uh, Ground Mount solar field that's L'Oreal, and it's a picture of the fence that is existing on the site.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. Would it be possible to put some low evergr, a mixture of evergreen and flowering shrubbery along this fence to soften the looks of it?
Yes. I think that, uh, you know, as long as it stays below, which we can do, below that six-foot-
Right.
I don't think that's a problem, though.
Okay.
And while we're on the fence, uh, how, uh, what portion of it will be decorative and what, what portion will be chain link?
Uh, the entire frontage of the, uh, the array, as well as in front of the, uh, bio-retention basin, and then approximately a hundred feet back on each side, and then it'll switch back to chain link fence.
All right, now, now if the board does not grant the variance, does that have any impact on the fence? Do we have to move the fence in any way?
Um, if you didn't grant the variance, essentially this first row would go away, and then the fence would go, move back to twenty-five feet from the right-of-way. So, right now, it's approximately ten from the right-of-way. It would go back to twenty-five.
But actually, the fence could be at the property line.
It could, yes.
So, it's not a setback issue?
Right.
But it's an issue of a relationship between the fence and the solar panels?
Exactly.
Anybody down at this end of the dais have a question?
Bob, Bob?
Um, I, you have this fence already existing, uh, where the existing solar array is?
Yes.
Okay. I, uh, this is an odd question, and it, we have a fence, uh, I'm on the board of the cemetery in East Millstone. We have a fence not as tall as six feet, but it does have the spiked top, and at least in one instance, a deer wound up being impaled on it, and I wondered if you had any problems like that, and whether it was a good idea to have these spikes in, uh, in, uh, because we do have a hugely, we are hugely overpopulated with deer in this area.
I was just kind of odd upon that question. Uh, actually, most of, if not all of L'Oreal's sites use the same decorative fence on their sites, and this fence here in particular, it covers the whole entire front, you know, their existing property, and they have not had any issues with that to date.
Okay, very good.
Anyone else? All right, uh, let's go ahead and open to the public.
Make a move to open it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for comment on this application? Anyone wishing to come forward? Go ahead over to the microphone, we'll swear you in.
Looks like it's on.
It is. Raise your right hand, please. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Richard C. Hibbard. I live at thirty-two Dahmer Road. And really, I, I have a couple of questions, and I, I think they may lead into some consideration, possibly on your part. I know they discussed, uh, certain things with regard to a basin for water retention, and that would give them some room to further expand their property into the rear. And if I'm not mistaken, previously, when this board reviewed some of the work that L'Oreal was planning, that prop, that thirteen-acre tract of property that they purchased had wetland on it. Now, I don't know if it's still classified as wetland or not, but my concern would be, are they trying to get this basin approval in underneath the solar panel, is that correct? Um, so that they can wash that out and then develop something that was classified as a wetland? And again, I don't know if it is today or not, but it was.
I answer that generally, whether there are wetlands there or not, they're, they're either there or they're not. Whether, if they put a basin on this property, that's not going to affect the delineation of another piece of property.
Okay, but, but the comment was that they could put the basin in so that they could develop- And what I'm staring at is this piece in here where there was at least-
Yeah, that, that's, that's not a subject of this application, though, so that's-
But, but, but the quite, but the answer is, if, if, again, if there are wetlands there, if they ever come in with an application, they'll have to do a wetlands delineation. If they're there, they're there. I, frankly, the reason I would think they're putting the basin there is that frankly, it gives them more, more, the potential for more square footage of building-
Right.
-on that thirteen acre.
Into that thirteen-acre tract, which, like I said, I, I questioned whether or not there's still wetland there or not. There was at one time. I, I don't know how those things go away.
Well, i- if, if they ever make an applica, I mean, they, I don't think the board ever saw the application that was contemplated on that parcel. Um, the applicant had, they had made an application, but I don't believe it even went to the board.
Well, and going back a number of years-
You know, they may make an application six months or ten years. I mean, we haven't heard anything from them recently that they're going to be doing anything.
Well, I think, just to appease your questions, uh, number one, there, there were wetlands in that area. We had them delineated, we had them confirmed by the DEP, and we also had a general permit to fill them. And it was just a small area over by Dahmer Road. Secondly, the detention basin that is anticipated to be placed underneath the solar panels is really for the benefit of the residents on Dahmer Road, because what happens is all this water runs towards Dahmer Road now. And it's, really, we should put the detention basin right here. And what we're looking to do is take advantage of these regional basins, take that water away from you, and direct it by you so that you don't have any, I'm sure that there's runoff and what have, there's poor drainage in Dahmer Road. If anything, in the future, we would pull that away from you and direct it in another direction.
But which would also open up the pen, the potential for you to develop that and move buildings even closer to the houses that exist on Dahmer Road now.
We still have to meet the requirements of the ordinance.
My, my only other comment was that they discussed something about, uh, tree movement and placing trees back into Dahmer Road. I happened to walk Dahmer Road today, and if you look at the side of Commerce Drive facing L'Oreal, there are numerous trees in there that were planted, I'm, I'm assuming probably by either L'Oreal or some of the construction projects that went on pursuant to it. They're all dead. And the property really isn't being maintained in, in, in that buffer zone between L'Oreal and Dahmer Road. And I know that has nothing to do with this project, but when they start talking about fixing things, these are things that aren't being maintained currently, and it, it is a concern to all of taxpayers in town.
Uh, anyone else wishing to speak?
Uh, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me just say that, based on his comment, I agree with him. I mean, I think I've said this before with the last solar array, you know, the residents complained about the buffer on Dahmer Road, and, and what was done, and it was done at the wrong time of year, was a bunch of evergreens were stuck in the vegetation, and, and they died. I think they've since been replaced, they, some may be doing a little bit better, but in general, I like to see if you do need to replant trees based on whatever comes out of that north end, to not do that. I mean, I would rather either have street trees on the facility, or something that is actually, you know, not going to be sort of like stuck in the brush and probably just, uh, die. I, I, I don't think it was done maliciously. I'm sure it was done with the best of intentions, just, we, we've talked about this before the last time. I mean, that generally just doesn't work, so I'd rather either see street trees or plantings in the facility, or even plantings that screen Dahmer Road, but from a, a real point of view, not putting a spruce tree in the middle of, of literally woods. I'm sure everyone has gone by there and knows what I'm talking about. Um, it's just not gonna, you know, survive, so.
I mean, we, we've worked with Mark in the past, and, you know, we're gonna try and continue to do so, and-
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely open space at the facility, uh, that you can enhance landscaping where you, where you could, or, or along Dahmer Road, but, you know, uh, Mark, yeah, definitely, don't, 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 make sure they don't stick them into the sticks.
Yeah, and that was, that was part of a larger effort, uh, by L'Oreal to address, uh, I think there was some-
Yeah, suffering concern.
You know, clearing after one of the storms.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, yeah, they, they put up a number of trees that, uh, in, in, in bad places and, uh, at the wrong time of year, and they died. But they also, um, if you could s, look on the, the picture, you can see there's a, a parking lot between Dahmer and the building, and they put a few hundred-foot-long fence with a black mesh, uh, I think it's eight-foot or ten-foot high, um, that does a very good job of screening. And, and they did that, that was not a site plan requirement, they did that on a voluntary basis to address the concerns of the neighbors. The trees that they put in on top of that, uh, or in addition to that, those happened to, uh, most of them didn't last. So, I'll, where, whatever the tree replacement value is, I, I have some idea, rather than putting it in the buffer, maybe at the end of Commerce, more in the landscaped area where we know it's gonna get maintained by their staff, that might be a better place to put it than sticking it out on Dahmer.
Yep, yep.
And you'll be removing dead trees that currently exist, right?
Yes.
And, and, I mean, Mike has already mentioned, Mark, but, uh, supervising, uh, that shrubbery and trees are put in areas where they will flourish.
Uh, any other comments from the board?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is an application preliminary and final site plan approval on variance request. We believe that the variance request, where discretion granted, we believe there's sufficient troops under the C-two section of the municipal land use law. As you can see, the applicant has agreed to, uh, most if not all of the staff reports,